Good evening, calling Newcastle City Council's regular meeting Monday, November 6, 2023. Please rise for the call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Can I get approval of the agenda? As a mayor, I'm glad that we approved the agenda.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of Monday, October 16, 2023, and the town hall of October 31, 2023. The 30th, 2023.
My honor, I move we approve the minutes.
I second. Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Do we have any nominations for recognition? We do have a certificate of recognition for Donald Walker. For his dedication of dedication of Newcastle with roadside loan along Highfold Highway 85. I want to thank you very much. I always see you out there when I'm on my way to the barn.
Yes.
And it always looks beautiful there. So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, David.
I would also like to present a certificate of recognition to Amber Redding. Would you like to come forward?
I was trying to draw. But I was told to be here, so here I am.
Just a little backstory. Amber helped one of our officers who was engaged in a physical confrontation was actually assaulted by an individual. And she helped to subdue the person and help our officer from getting sustaining any further injury. So, I would like to recognize her for her bravery and assisting us in doing our job. So, thank you very much.
Citizens Business and Writing, Pinnacle Bank Depository Public Funds. To whom it may concern pursuant to the requirement of Wyoming Statute 94818, normal application is made by Pinnacle Bank, Wyoming, if corporation or corporation organized and existing under the laws of Wyoming and having its office and principal place of business in the city of Newcastle in the Midwest. Designated public funds, Pinnacle Bank, Wyoming agrees to furnish the securities as provided for in section 9-4-821 to cover public funds as may be deposited by the city of Newcastle, Newcastle, Wyoming. Furthermore, Pinnacle Bank, Wyoming agrees to comply with Wyoming Statute 9-4-806.
Your honor, I move that we accept the Pinnacle Banks as a depository public fund.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Citizens Business Verbal, Haley Carter. I don't see Billard either. We'll go to Citizens Verbal, number three, Eileen Bickers.
I'm Eileen Bickers and the pickleball court on the small lot adjacent to Centennial Park is taking shape. So, I want to follow through on my word and donate it to the city when it's all complete. So, I'm guessing that it's easier said than done. I don't know the process from here, so that's what I'm hoping to sort of find out is what I need to do next and other than get it completed and see what your process and my process is and go from there.
Yeah, deed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I have no idea of the orders.
I don't know about this.
Basically, what we would end up doing is we would take the deed. We'd probably have to make sure that we did have a be some sort of executive session to discuss it because there are other properties around it that might be an issue. Other than that, then we would make a deliberation on that and go from there.
Is this the property where you're going to put the dog park? Okay. So, they have you talking to the residents around and they're okay with that?
One didn't want water running that direction, so we're putting blocks along that wall. Other than that.
Do you play pickleball?
Yeah, not real good, but I play a little.
Because she wants to get better. She's yeah.
Yeah. I want to have to break that.
I want you to bring videos next time.
I think it's really a growing sport, I guess, right? It's number one fastest growing sport.
I probably would be able to. Maybe get one supervisor brings house and parks committee. I would say I would get in contact with you.
And along with the dog park thing, I have two coop bag stands and garbage bins and things that I'd like to donate to the city that could want that bike path or something so that maybe people get more in habit of picking up after their animals.
I would talk with Ray about that.
Okay.
I can do that. All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yep. Yes, thank you. So, I know the going back to Citizens Business, number two, the Billard Nelson with Emergency Operations Plan. I believe this is something that we need to review and see if we need to put any changes in it or is this the final draft?
This is one that's been out there for several years. It's been put together and there were some changes and I went through items in there and I didn't really see anything that they noted in there yellow with that word changes that were put in several years ago. This is just something that the county has put together on their emergency operating Some of their master. Vitality Operation. Debris Management Plan. They're just having to sign on of the county and the city on the plan when they submit these. So, it's not something that's new, but it's been out there.
Said draft subject of approval on 9/30/19. Is this something that we need to make a motion of because I it's a lot to read.
Is this mainly just the county stuff though, isn't it? I mean, it includes us.
Yeah.
But they're the people in charge, not we're not. Or I'm.
Maybe we should table this just for the fact that our emergency man is not here to explain exactly what it is needed or if he was just here to present it to us. I'm not exactly sure. Huh? So, we'll table this to the next meeting. So, you motioned and you seconded, is that what I heard? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Moving on to Mayor Councilmember reports, number four, Town Hall, City Police Force. So, we had our town hall meeting. The census that was provided by Simons and by the people that spoke was to keep our city police force and I would like to keep it and kind of put it to rest today if the council agrees. And I did like former mayor Mike Mills, who suggested taking roll call on everyone's opinion on dissolving or keeping. And so, I'll start with Ty before any motions are made.
Madam Mayor, I'm not 100% certain that I want to dissolve the police force and I'm not 100% certain that I want to keep the police force. So, I don't know how you can call roll on something if somebody's mind isn't made up.
I'm just saying if this is something we're going to go forward with and do some kind of study on and see are we going to do that or are we going to let, you know, put it to bed and keep our police force and focus on what we have now.
Okay, that's fair. Based on the numbers that were generated by Simon at the at the event, there was a lot of people that were undecided. If you compared those numbers to the people who were decided, it was really close. And I think that when you have people in a public forum like that, that sometimes people aren't willing to express themselves in front of a large crowd like that. So, I don't think that this is necessarily something that needs to be put to bed quite yet. I think that there's a lot of other factors that are in play and there's still people that are coming to me talking about how they think it's a positive thing. So, I am not in favor of tabling it right now. We're putting it to bed, as you said.
Also, Ms. Ross.
I am basically against doing anything about dissolving the police department. I think that for a city to give up its police power to an elected official who's elected once every four years, we could just end up with a hellacious mess. And I don't want to see our police powers becoming a political ping pong ball in the city or in the county. And I would strongly suggest that we keep our police department.
Councilmember Dixon.
You know, without a lot of data, which I think this would take, a year or two, you can sit down and discuss this in a reasonable manner. It's not going to get us two or three months from now and say, hey, we're done with this. This needs to be put to bed as we're trying to hire and rebuild this department and put back into the community for protection here. So, I'm against right now of dissolving, as you've seen the community members have talked to.
Councilwoman McCall.
I'm wanting to put this to bed right now. I'm tired of the turmoil that the city has been under for I don't know how many years. It just seems like everything's been in an uproar and I'm ready to move on. I'm willing to give Chief Derek Thompson a chance to go forward. He has tried to prove to us already that he's willing to step up and I'm willing to give him that chance. So, I think we should just go forward and keep it.
Councilmember.
I think we should keep the PD because the safety of the communities should come before the dollar sign. And we're not going to get any good police force if they think they're going to get dissolved and kicked out of the office and they won't have a job in six months or a year. I'm for keeping the Newcastle Police Department.
Councilwoman Dunn.
I'd just like to say I regret the other night when we had that meeting, not standing up and talking, but I look at I don't I don't want to see the police force go either. I mean, honestly. But I look at it from a business standpoint. I look at it from a from a business standpoint and of course, I heard I heard the phrase or the quote that I made a while back about how I think we should be writing more tickets and, you know, putting money back into the police force to compensate for the expenditures. I mean, that's that's what the way I saw it. I didn't realize that the public was I'm not going to say the public, the people that spoke up at that meeting. It was pretty evident that all they're worried about is being protected. But I would love for people to come spend the day with me and see what I see during the day. It's not being corrected as far as ordinances go. And I'm talking about I'm talking about traffic violations that are just it's unbelievable. I know you guys, I know you're tired to hear me go on and on about it, but it's unreal. And then the other day, I don't even didn't even really want to bring this up, but I saw a police officer sleeping in his car.
That's a personality that needs to be examined.
It's not personnel because it was in broad open daylight at 10 o'clock in the morning. Don't even start that. I'm telling you, there was a passenger with me and I said, was he sleeping? And he said, yeah, I think so. So, I turned around and went up into that parking lot and drove right up to the car and the guy was he was set. And I'm going, okay. So, I know we don't have a ordinance officer to take care of the ordinances, but if you're just going to sit there and sleep, I mean, there's lots of stuff that could be done in town as far as ordinance ordinances go. And I'm not trying to be a jackass about this, but I mean, there's no room for sleeping on the on the job. And like I said, I look at this as a business standpoint. So, and I know Mr. James said that that's when you start getting corruption is when you start doing speed traps and stuff. Well, you know, I don't see any speed traps. If the police officer is sitting in his squad car on the street and somebody volunteers to speed and and I forgot about this, there was another time I caught the same guy sleeping because I saw a vehicle go by and I know you're thinking I'm exaggerating speeds, but I know it was like 45 and he never never even moved and I went down there and he was sleeping. And I mean, this was traffic going this way and he parked this way. I just don't know what to say. If you're not if you can't do your job, I mean, at least go hide or go home, but don't sleep in the public side.
So, is that against dissolving?
I don't I don't want to dissolve the police department and and Chief Thompson, I mean, he's got his work cut out for him, I'm sure. And I'm glad that he took it and I hope he does something with it. But I am I am just, I guess, I'm almost to the point where I just don't care anymore because you see it every I mean, there's a there's a guy running around on a mini four wheeler with no plates on it pulling a trailer and driving all over town on the street. Not on it, not on the side, but in the middle of the street. And I know he can't be everywhere. I understand that, but for God's sake, there's there's just stuff going on everywhere in town. And I mean, I see it just right downtown, you know, let alone everywhere else. And so, that brings me back where the people, all they all they're looking for is for protection. If you don't care about the ordinances being violated, and I'm talking about traffic ordinances, and I know there's weeds and stuff all that of that nature too, but if we're not going to do anything about the ordinances, then throw the ordinance book away and and let the police officers just sit and be on standby in case there's a call. But when this stuff's going on right in front of your face, it's just it's mad. And no, I don't I don't want to get rid of the police department. I don't want anybody to see I don't want anybody to lose their job, anything like that, but for God's sake, let's do something. Let's do our job. And it's it doesn't stop there, but I'm not going to waste all your time, but that's just the way I feel.
Okay. Do we have a motion for either way?
And I don't appreciate being cut off while I'm talking. I'm just about done, so if you let me talk till I'm done, that's great, but don't cut me off.
You said you don't want to dissolve and.
Okay, fine. I'm done. You don't want to hear it.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we keep the police department as is and let Chief Thompson build it up.
Second.
Here we have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
Yep, I have further discussion. So, I wasn't talking about dissolving the police. Well, I was. So, the thing is, we found a way to solve the problem without anybody losing their jobs and we were looking and trying to keep the same like level of coverage, which I believe to be possible. So, if we could save money in the process, that's a positive thing for our town. If we still had the same level of coverage in our town, that's a positive thing for our town. So, you know, it's about identifying a problem and then trying to find a solution for that problem. So, you know, I wasn't I didn't want to see anyone lose their job. I just wanted to see emergency services streamlined and still try to keep the same level of coverage for our citizens and then maybe save a few bucks that we could put back into the community in the process. So, Derek, I think you're going to be a great chief, okay? And and I appreciate your service and I've heard about what a good guy you are. So, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, police department stays. Before we go on to old business, I was waiting for someone to show up. So, now that she's here, I do have an award to present. Former Chief Foles actually sent off for this back in June. There was a 911 call. I know a lot of the people here know what it's about, but I talked with the ambulance service because I do not have information from the former chief. But talking with Chris Alts with the Campbell County, he advised me that Chief Thompson, at the time was sergeant and responded to the 911 call, performed CPR three to four minutes before the ambulance started. And as the ambulance was there, he would rotate every two minutes with one of the EMTs, so the other EMT was able to do IDs and things to that factor. And it didn't stop there. The ambulance service said it was a blessing to have you also drive the ambulance to the hospital so both EMTs could be in the back. And with that, you are going to be presented with a life-saving award pin. Moving on to old business, ordinance number seven, series 2023, garbage rates A ordinance number seven, 2023, an ordinance in section 13-9 of Article 2, Chapter 13 of the Code of the Town of the City of Newcastle, Wyoming, 1961, to increase garbage collection charges and providing an effective rate, be it ordained by the government body of the city of Newcastle, Western County, Wyoming. So, section one, section 13-9 of Article 2, Chapter 13 of Code of the Town of the City of Newcastle, Wyoming, 1961 shall be and hereby is only to be in complete form as follows. Charges for garbage collection by the city. Basic rates for collection, removal, transporting and disposal of garbage made garbage by employees and agents of the city within the city limits shall be as follows. A 95 gallon capacity cans, the monthly garbage service collection charge for 95 gallon capacity cans shall be $20.10 for the collection per week per can. The additional 95 gallon can shall be charged $20.10 per can. B 300 gallon capacity cans, monthly garbage service schedule. The 300 gallons are the commercial garbage cans for those who don't know. For each additional 300 gallon capacity can in excess of eight 300 gallon capacity cans, the monthly collection charge will be as follows, $45.09 for the collection per week, $88.16 for two collections per week, $132.25 for three collections per week, $176.33 for four collections per week, and $220.42 for five collections per week.
Your honor, I move that we pass the ordinance and this is a served reading, isn't it?
Correct.
On its serve reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passed on the sixth day of November. And we tabled this from last meeting. It says, Dear Honorable Councilmembers, I'm writing this letter to request the account be concerted for the reduction in sewer charges for seven months of the year. It has come to my attention that the Wyoming Conservation Camp has historically been charged for 100% of the gallons of water usage for calculating sewer charges. During the summer months, we do water extensive facility loans and have a productive garden that use just under 2.0 acres. This summer alone, the facility grew over 40,000 of produce that was used in their kitchen, our kitchen. All of the water we consume is not returned in sewage. Please consider Wyoming Honor Conservation Camp for November through March. Gallons used divided by five months and use that figure for the sewer charges. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration. Respectfully, Todd Martin, Woodland. Did you look into this? I think there was...
We were going to discuss it at the Water Sewer Committee meeting, but fortunately I had an emergency I had to take care of, so we didn't have the count at the committee meeting. So, we said about probably a night after the meeting, we want to discuss a date for the next one.
I move to table.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to know, does this put us in a position that, that all of the citizens? Because I, I have a big, big yard and I watered all summer long. And I'd like to come here and say, oh, please, don't, don't bill me for my water because it doesn't go down your sewer. And I, I, I just am totally opposed to doing this. Just thought I'd throw my two cents.
That's what discussions are about.
Opens a big can worms.
When the sewer committee meets, they can take that into the sewer.
I think I want that committee.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. So, we'll take that.
We just take...
Oh, we'll take him later. Yes. Yeah, I think.
Thank you.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Moving on to Department head report, City Attorney Dublin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In front of me, I have ordinance number eight, 2023. I do have one amendment on that before we move forward. Under the subsection C where it says no authorized, it should be no unauthorized person. I think that's probably relatively important.
Yeah, probably. I like that.
So, Council, what this basically is for is in regard to my asking the council, I believe it would have been two meetings ago, basically to change some of the language regarding the connections to the manholes and sewers and some of the issues we had with that ordinance.
Okay. So, what do we do from here, Mr. Attorney?
You could move to accept it and then from there, we'll have a discussion on hold deal, I would assume.
With amendment.
With the amendment, yeah, for sure with the amendment.
Okay, well, I'll move that when we look at this ordinance and what the amendment is Mr. Hughes proposed.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
So, is it going to be ready for its first reading, let's...
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be fine for next meeting. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, City Clerk Treasurer Stacy.
As we are going through our independent audit, one of the questions the auditor asked was the decrease in revenue for the dispatch services. We have not had any payments received since November of last year. But we also changed to doing the billing per call, which changed the amount significantly. I just wanted to notify the council of that and see if there was any direction as to if we want to send out vouchers going back to the $4,500 a month or what the council would choose to do. And we've been providing services and...
So, I think in, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, in the discussions, we basically have talked about not opening the can of worms with the county over how much it was supposed to be charged in the, in the pendency between the Joint Powers Board negotiations, as well as once that was actually established. Because it was kind of the sort of ambiguity in terms of what they were going to pay and what we were going to agree to pay because the county and the city were fighting, obviously. That obviously has changed. And I believe it would have been the $4,500 is what we were going to accept at the time, if I'm correct, right?
That discussion, I believe, was had before I was in the position I'm in, I guess. I, I know that we did have the discussion about kind of not opening the can of worms or not reopening the wound, so to say.
Yeah.
But obviously, there's some, some compensation there that should be collected, I guess. But as far as what they were going to pay or how that was going to all be, I don't know. I don't know if there was ever a final decision made on that. And I guess I don't know that we were in the position to make that decision in those negotiations either. Is it something that would be beneficial for me to have a conversation with the sheriff about or...
Yes.
I guess if you guys want me to absorb that, I can, I can talk with him about that and, yeah.
We're going on 12 months, $50,000.
And my, my other concern while we're on the topic about funding as far as dispatch goes is we're still paying for the dispatch center as we speak. We have not transitioned our dispatch services and our dispatch expenses to the Joint Powers Board. So, I, I do agree with the fact that we need to collect back taxes, so to say, to some degree because we can't flip the bill for everything. So, I will try to have a, a conversation with the sheriff about that. Maybe we can come to some kind of resolution on them paying for dispatch services back to November of last year.
We went by the phone calls. Isn't that almost double the bill for the county?
It increased, didn't it?
Yeah, and it was just asking them to pay for their part. So, when you start having your discussion with that, that's, that's good to know.
So, in the risk of jumping ahead, you're going to address Joint Powers Boards matters in, in your report?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
Chief Thompson saw it. Is, is, is this something that is moving ahead at a good rate of speed? Is it going to happen sometime soon?
Yes, I, I believe so. I feel pretty comfortable with the rate at which it's moving. The, kind of a funny story, the first, first hiccup was we needed an EIN or a tax ID number, employer identification number, in order to get any bank accounts opened, anything like that. Then we needed to be bonded, so we're working on the bonding process now because nobody will give us any money if, if we aren't bonded. So, that's the next step in the process. But the, the EIN gave us a hiccup because our name's about three paragraphs long and it wouldn't fit on the form for the, for the federal government, so that was hiccup number one. We had to have a meeting on how to condense the name down far enough that would fit on the tax form for the federal government, so... There's been some interesting hangups, but we are moving along well. And I think we can get it funded and get things transitioned over here fairly reasonably quickly, so... I'm pushing hard for that because I don't want to pay more twice, so...
Maybe speak with the sheriff and make it...
Yes, I agree with that. So, all this, all this time, has there been a voucher filled out and sent to him, submitted to him?
Not after we were no longer receiving the reports from the call service to calculate.
How long ago was that?
Probably in March.
Well, Council, what, what do we want to do?
Because the voucher would, would show the paperwork. And has to be submitted every month. And that would be the, wouldn't that be the backup?
Or maybe just warn them that it's coming.
Well, not just to warn them. I mean, you, you have to submit a voucher in the county to get paid. I don't think they're allowed. What it's for, but that would be the, that would be your receipt. I mean, you'd make a copy of what you submitted and that would be, and you would attach the payment. If you, if you got it.
Even though we sent vouchers out previous, we have not received a payment. I mean, I think...
But you have sent vouchers. That's what I was asking.
Up until March, Karen. After that, I had asked for some direction and I didn't get much, to be honest. They had brought it up at the county meeting one, one time and I had to get direction.
I guess I wasn't paying attention, but I would be submitting vouchers.
Should we, should we go back to the $4,500 and just charge, do that and see if that amendment appeases them? At least we'll get something?
Well, I think we should let the Chief talk to the sheriff and get the clerk on the voucher.
And then are they going to report if they need to...
The only other thing I had was just asking council approval for early closure for Thanksgiving using, the clerks would use vacation time personally. Early Wednesday, closing at noon possibly, and then be closed Friday the after.
I move that we accept Cortagarty's proposal for Thanksgiving closure early on Wednesday and holiday Friday.
Thanks, Senator.
Great. We have a motion in second. Any further discussion?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
And that's all I have.
Any questions for City Clerk?
Well, I did have one. On the claims that you sent me in the mail, there was one for the Wyoming State Lambs for $13,500 almost.
That's for our loan payment for loan number five and for Boyd Avenue.
Okay.
The, the well's actually on, on State East.
We used state revolving funds to match the WWC funds.
For the state loan.
To state revolving fund loan, is what it is.
Okay.
Project was 67% funded by the WWDC. The rest would ask to be a loan, so... I believe it's $708,000 loan.
Any other question?
How, how often will we be paying the $13,500?
That's a yearly payment.
Thank you.
Unless we pay it off in the end.
Police or Public Works Supervisor, Grace.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not believe we have the contract ready for this meeting for the paving project with Sackerson. So, we'll present that at the next meeting. The, one thing I have is Zach Lane has completed his CDL training. He took his test last week, acquired his license Friday, so I would ask for a 50 cent raise for completing the CDL effective November 6th.
I move that we approve Zach Lane for a 50 cent raise for completion of the CDL effective November 6th.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you. The Burke's meeting that I believe, were you wanting to talk about that, Councilman Owens?
Oh, yeah.
During, during committee meetings.
Yeah, I'll cover that committee meeting in seconds.
Water committee meeting, I apologize, I was having illness in the family. I had to take care of it. After the meeting, I'll get with the committee members and we can set the time to meet at that one. We did spend some time last week, started prepping for the ice rink. We removed the trees, moved the skate equipment, moved the benches up there, cleaned the area. So, other than the electrical, which I'm kind of at the mercy of the electrician and their time schedule, their work schedule, so... Rest of what they asked for has been, has been done. Now, that's about all I have.
Can I, I do have that.
Oh, you did, you did. Okay, so we do have the Sackerson contract for the paving project. This is First Avenue, a repair on Birch Street, and then Millenore Lay on North Seneca. I would recommend the council authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
I move that the mayor sign the contract with Sackerson paving for the proposed project.
But they're not doing it until next year, remember? They have to have it done by July 1st, so be in dispatch of year.
And this locks and price, are there any upgrades? Two second. Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Birch Street, what, red?
First Avenue. We'll do a six inch paving section on First, six inch paving, repair on Birch where we installed the new storm sewer. Then it would be a two inch Millenore Lay from Warwick to Cambria Street on North Seneca.
I think it's a positive thing anytime we can repair a street.
Absolutely. Take pictures and do it, thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, any questions for Public Works Supervisor, Grace Tomlin?
Have we heard anything more about the cement building that was supposed to be in Dow Park, but isn't? Well, that's his problem now, not Frank.
Frank got rid of that. Maybe in his report. Can we have anything on that built up for Dow Park?
Oh, the UVC contract?
Yeah.
He, that's a breakdown that's not been served. So, there will be, there will be served here in, I would assume, this week. If he's not, then it will become my duty to find where he is.
Sounds exciting.
It's very exciting.
So, the guy's hiding something.
Excited to find out what happens.
And it could be a, it could be a sheriff's department thing. It could be he's not, he's on holiday, who knows, so...
Maybe use the boyers to the sheriff.
All right, Police Chief, your conference.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first item of business I have here had dispatch, I was out of town and I did not get the calls for service printed, so I apologize. My next item of business is we have two patrol vehicles that I believe were all approved for purchase. And when I got to digging, Stacy and I, or I asked Stacy to give me some information and it does not appear that the process was gone about appropriately. So, we need to, if we're going to purchase these vehicles, we need to put them out for bid.
I thought they were leased.
So, we looked into that too. And even if you're going to lease a vehicle, it says lease or purchase. If it's a new vehicle, it does not matter what it costs. There's no cost threshold for a vehicle under state statute. It must be put out for bid. So, I'm new to this process and...
That's one of their new July 1st updates to the entire statute book. So, it's just any vehicle, like he said, basically.
And I believe that this had initially happened before July 1st. That might be where that fell through the cracks. So, at this point, if we're going to purchase these, we'll have to put them out for bid. The current vehicles that were ordered by Chief... The current vehicles that were ordered by Chief Bowles combined are a hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. But we need to put a bid out for vehicles if we're going to purchase them.
And you can put all the specs together?
Yes, I have available to me most of the specs that I need, so we should be good to go on that front. I'm going to have Interim Engineer Bartlett help me with that process. He seems to be very knowledgeable in that area, so. If it's approved by the council, I will put that information together and we'll get that advertised and hopefully get this process moving.
So what did Bowles do? Did he order?
So it's kind of a unique deal. You can order these vehicles.
So he did?
He did.
We discussed this with the entire council.
But when you order the vehicle, if you decide you don't want it, you can turn it back. The problem that we run into in this situation is... And the other thing is you don't have to pay for them for the first year. But the problem we run into in this situation, if I remember correctly, he sent them two radios that the city owned and installed them in those vehicles. So now we're kind of in a pickle. So we either need to move forward with purchasing these vehicles or get our radios back. And it scares me what it might cost us to get those radios back out of there, so. We kind of got ourselves a little bit of a pickle here, if I'm being honest, so. I don't know that it was anybody's wrongdoing that got us in this situation. It's just by the cards, well.
The reason he's having an issue right now is legislature change the statute.
Right. Right in the middle of whatever this is happening.
Yeah, and I don't know the timing of it necessarily, but in terms of how this is going to pan out. You have to have the bids to expend city funds for said vehicles, any vehicle, whether it's leased.
And that's July. So when did we make...
That's what I was trying to say. I mean, if we've already done this, it's too late to put the bid out.
I have a purchase order that was signed in February of twenty-two for these vehicles. So is that exempted from the statute?
Well, I mean, it would have been under... That contract would be under the...
Previous.
That statute's time period. So what was... When did you get notice of this in terms of you had to get a bid? Was there someone specifically that said that to you or?
No. When I talked to... So in order to purchase the vehicles, he needs a copy of the city council meeting where it was... A motion was made to purchase the vehicles. Which I don't think we had a sufficient motion from the minutes. It was authorization to explore the purchase.
Okay.
So he needed several things, and in that process, I learned that we may be in trouble in that it didn't look like it was put out for bid. And the current statute said it must be put out for bid.
How much does the radio cost, one of the little pieces?
I couldn't give you an exact number, but I would bet they're six thousand dollars a piece. Very expensive.
Wow. And do we know this company that he sent the radios to?
They're a pretty reputable company. A lot of people purchase vehicles from. It's John Jones out of Indiana.
Indiana?
Yeah, Indiana. They're pretty well-known for...
And he sent them radios based upon the fact that we said you can explore and look?
Maybe John Jones is specifically for emergency vehicles.
You think they're already installed?
He's going through there.
Vehicles are ready for...
So they're over a year old?
No, they're...
The vehicles?
The vehicles are not, no.
But you said they were installed.
The radio.
In the vehicles.
Yeah.
Wasn't that a long time ago?
No.
Oh.
They just received the vehicles in September, I want to say. I called. And they were up in them then, and they called me two weeks ago and said, they're done, they're ready. And when I started exploring what we could get them, I went, oh, we're drunk.
So we got to tell them they got a bid in there.
Well, maybe not.
Maybe not, if I understand what they're saying, because this purchase order was signed in January.
Chief, can you send me that? That way I can look into it and then we'll know what we need to do. In terms of what we need to do here tonight, I think what we'll do is I'll look into that and I can just give a report at the next meeting. Time is not of the essence right now in regards to this.
Time is, to a degree, of the essence.
Okay.
They are going to want to move those vehicles sooner than later if they can. I explained to the representative from the dealership today the situation we were in, so. I told them three weeks to a month. I was hoping that we could have this thing aired out.
Well, in three weeks, we have another meeting in that time frame.
Right.
That's how long ago? Did you tell them that? A week ago?
No, today.
Today?
Today.
So we should be able to discuss it.
Why can't we just put it out for bid then?
I think that would... If the council agrees.
Right now, put it out for bid.
How can we put it out for bid when the radios are in?
They have to take six hundred and dollars off each car.
So is that what would happen?
Chief, the thing that I'm somewhat worried about here... So you said that it was signed by Chief Bowles, correct?
Yes.
Okay. There was no... Obviously, there's no mayor or signature on there. I mean, it is a purchase contract, is it not?
Says purchase order right on top of it.
Let me look at that and then I'll discuss it at the next meeting.
Are you... Well, if we have to bid it out, would you be able to let him know by tomorrow? Because the cutoff for the papers, what, at what o'clock?
That depends on the day, but yeah, if you could call Amy, if you need her number, I can get that to you.
Okay. I guess what I...
Or Alexis. Just call Alexis. She'll be able to get it together.
With leave of the council, I would ask that I have a motion to either wait till the next council meeting to give a report on the purchase order or to also have the ability to give Stacy the requisite information to basically put out the bids if necessary.
So move.
I move what you just said.
He moved it outside.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
I just wanted to ask you the question. When was that dated that he signed that purchase order?
February twenty-second, twenty-three.
Okay, so that was before the legislature changed the rule?
Right. That was July.
Yes. And I haven't looked back at the statute that was on the books last year to know the particulars of what is in it, so. We'll have to explore. I didn't think of it that way either, so.
Where I'm confused is we authorized him as a council to look into purchasing the vehicle, but we were never provided with a report on said vehicle, and we didn't authorize him to move forward with the purchase. So that's where I'm getting hung up with this whole discussion.
That's where our attorney's hung up too.
Because I can probably have those legality issues.
We have a can of worms in here.
Let's not open it.
Another one, you mean?
I'm not sure. A can of worms.
The next one's a little easier. Rebecca Swanteski was our community service officer until the beginning of September of this year. She has requested that she be allowed to do some volunteer work. I was a little bit concerned about workers' comp issues and things like that if she were to help us, and I asked Stacy to look into that, and she helped me out on that. And basically, if we were to allow her to come back and do some volunteer work, which I would be glad to have her, all we would have to do is pay workers' comp for her, but we don't know what number on what that would cost exactly, but I think it would be pretty negligible. So I would ask the council to allow her to come back as a volunteer.
What would you be?
She likes doing a lot of the special events stuff, like traffic control for parades and some of the public relations stuff, like trunk or treat and things like that. I also have a great deal of other things that I can assign her to do if she's really bored on her weekends, so. Some things will set up a new P D and records-keeping type of stuff and things like that, so. I would be glad to use all the free labor it can get. And the beauty of bringing her back, and she's already been through the background checks, she already knows the process, there's no training involved, there's... You know, it's pretty simple to just keep her on as a volunteer, so.
I move that we accept Rebecca Swanteski as a volunteer for the Newcastle Police Department.
Okay.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, so Chief, she is going to work for free. And you're just going to pay... We're going to pay workmen's comp, and she's just going to work for free. What is... I don't understand the motivation behind this volunteer work. She was doing it as a paid position for the city of Newcastle.
Right.
And now she's not, so now she wants to come back and volunteer for free.
You said that about four...
I know, it's hard. It is hard.
It's blowing my mind. It's blowing my mind.
Yeah. So...
You don't know what free means.
Yeah. So I think her motivation is that... And I'm not going to get too far in the woods of her personal life, but she now works from home. And I think more than anything, she misses the social aspect of being around the public and interacting with the public, and she... I think that's her biggest motivation. Wanting to come back and be involved with the public, and... Or she works from home. She's talking to people on the phone all the time in other states and maybe countries for all I know, so. I think that's her biggest thing is...
I work from home and I kind of get that, so it's good to get out and get out of the house.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Oh, sorry.
I'm not pro aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
And the last thing I had, I just wanted to give everybody an update on the joint powers board. I think I kind of have already covered that. We're in the process right now of getting bonded so we can accept funding. We got the E I M or tax I D number, so we can get bank accounts set up. So we kind of decided at the last meeting that we were probably going to use multiple banks to put our money into, and for different reasons. Some banks offer better rates on CDs and things like that if we're going to put money into a C D at the end of the year, so. But at any rate, we're going to be sending out vouchers for payment to... For each entity to pay in the joint powers board here shortly. Once our bonding is done, because of my understanding is nobody's going to give us any money if we aren't bonded, so. That's where we're at now, and our target date for moving dispatch into the new building is... Well, the furniture will be in December sixth, so the rest of the computer hardware should be in shortly thereafter. They need the furniture in place before we can complete the rest of... ...running in the new dispatch center over here in the city building with any luck. So once we also have a job application, or not a job application, an advertisement that we will be putting out for a director position so we can use that position filled, so that person can take over some of the things that the board is doing. Each individual member has been assigned different tasks that hopefully we can now pass along to the directors and have them kind of take over some of the hiring and things like that, and some of the administrative parts of the joint powers board, so. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Will the director be trained to dispatch?
Yes, we want them to be a trained dispatcher, obviously.
I have a question for the chief. This was in regard to the C S O position. Can you just elaborate? A couple of council meetings ago, you... I was going to bring this up with Rebecca Swanteski volunteer thing, but...
Okay.
You had mentioned, could we been without a C S O for... Well, since the beginning or middle of summer, possibly? Like July timeframe, maybe?
Beginning of September.
Beginning of September. So you had elaborated on maybe having the officers pick up some of the ordinance enforcement duties? Have you progressed any further in that line of thinking?
I haven't gone forward with my plan yet, so to say, so I haven't said, you know, officer, so-and-so, you're responsible for this yet, but... My line of thinking is still that I'm going to basically take the map of the city and zone that off into hopefully equal-sized zones and assign an officer to each of those zones and have them dedicate one to two hours of their shift every day driving around that particular area. And probably the first thing we'll do is give out notices. So if we drive by your house, we give you a notice that says, Mr. Owens, you're in violation of such ordinance.
I've got those before.
Okay. I'll make sure they pay special attention to your house. But just a courtesy notice that, hey, we would like you to bring your property or your vehicle or what have you in compliance with this ordinance. And then we check back later, and if they haven't complied, we make contact again, and, you know, at that point, it's a potential that we may need to issue a citation, so. The other thing that I want to do in conjunction with this, and I've had trouble getting to this point, is I really want to use social media as our friend in saying, this is our plan. This is what's going to happen. This officer is going to be assigned to your neighborhood. Please make sure that you bring your property in compliance with the city ordinances, advertise what the city ordinances are. But the problem is, we can't find anybody that supposedly has administrative access to the Newcastle Police Department Facebook page, which is a problem. I've asked our former I T person, I've asked our former chief, and nobody seems to have access. I don't know if I'm going to have to call Facebook and have it shut down and start over, and I think that would be a really good tool to gain compliance with people and give them a heads up before they have to be standing there face-to-face talking to a uniformed officer, which is uncomfortable for some people. I think it would be nice if they read it and say, okay, before they come to knock on my door, I need to clean up my trash, or I need to mow my yard, or what have you. I need to register my meal. So I think that would be a very valuable tool to use in conjunction with the other portion of the plan, if that makes sense, so.
Yeah, and so along with the social media, I mean, I don't know what the protocols are. I get on Facebook quite often, but... I mean, there's already some well-established pages where the mayor makes announcements and stuff like that. I didn't know if possibly you could make an announcement as the police chief on those, and then that would get the word out. That's how some of the citizens have come to us and asked us to advertise for some of that stuff before.
Yeah.
That's a suggestion.
And do you know some of those pages? I know, like, there's the... Is it the top of the town? Is that a big one?
There's the What's Happening.
What's Happening.
From Ransome Reeves, both Newcastle and Westin County.
Okay.
And the second page.
Okay.
Yeah, because they changed it. It was Newcastle, top of the town, and then they changed it to Newcastle, What's Happening.
Okay. I try to avoid Facebook because... But yeah, I think that would be a good tool to use enough. I can definitely put things on those pages too, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Any other questions for the chief?
There's all kinds of questions, but the main question is, do our citizens want this? So let's have it come out.
And there's more to it than that.
There's a lot more to it.
But we've seen it's sort of been a perfect storm. After the newspaper, me primarily suggested a few years ago, the conversation needed to be had. Everybody thought... I was saying the move needed to be made, and even if you make the move, you're talking about, I think realistically, probably a two to four-year transition. You know, a lot of the people who talk about, oh, people's jobs and everything, this isn't something you do overnight. Even I think when you decide to do it, what you do is you start a clock. Hell, we've seen shifting from city landfills to regional landfills takes two decades for crying out... Hell, we've seen shifting from city landfills to regional landfills takes two decades for crying out loud. I don't think it should take that long. That's ridiculous, but.
Okay, standing committee reports.
Uh, I have some, Madam Mayor. Uh, the Parks Committee met a couple of times, uh, since the last council meeting. Uh, the first time, we kinda got together and went over a list of, uh, possible, uh, capital improvements, uh, projects, um, which included a, a bunch of, uh, you know, park upgrades and stuff like that. And then, uh, we kinda, uh, after we went over those, we, we all went home and kinda looked at the list. And then we reconvened and had another meeting where we, uh, uh, assigned them priorities. Um, and I don't, uh, if you could help me, uh, Greg, what's the, uh, uh, the timeframe that we were trying to look at to get these projects done? Or did we even assign it a timeframe? We just kind of assigned them priorities?
I thought it was something, some of them were down the road, kind of.
Yeah, Council, I, this was just a list of projects we wanna complete at some point. Um, now that we have a list of projects, we can look at costs and then start telling the capital improvements plan for the parks and cemeteries specifically. And this could be a five-year, ten-year, twenty-year plan by the time it's said and done. It just depends on funding.
Okay.
But now we, now we've established our, our priorities, so we can start looking at the costs involved with the, the different projects.
So, um, you know, in the list, uh, we had, the top three, um, were all worked up at the cemetery. So the cemetery work building is currently, uh, kinda in the way for, um, some cemetery expansion plans. So we were thinking about, um, eliminating the building where it stands and then moving the building to the other side of the cemetery. Now it'd open it up so that we could do the landscaping necessary and open it up for plots. Um, 'cause we were really low on plots for a while. Um, and then this, uh, number two is the sprinklers, uh, system at the cemetery, um, which, um, as some of you might have known, um, was a, a huge complaint at, uh, one of the council meetings after the water rate increases. Um, and then, uh, the Veterans Memorial at the, uh, uh, when we moved the, the building, then the Veterans Memorial would have to be addressed. And so there was talk about, um, where we were gonna move the, the Veterans Memorial and stuff. Uh, and then, uh, number four is the, uh, the Dog Park idea. Uh, number five was, uh, the Rovey Park Playground. Uh, Rovey Park never got, um, any play equipment for the kids. So we feel like, uh, the citizens in, in Saddle Subdivision would use it more if there was actually some, uh, some equipment there for the kids to play on. Um, number six was replace the playground at Centennial Park. Uh, the playground equipment's in really rough shape and it, it should be slated for replacement. Um, horseshoe pits is number eight. So identifying a place for, uh, horseshoe pits at one of the existing parks. Uh, number nine is playground at the Sports Complex. Um, a lot of citizens would like to see some, some playground equipment out at the Sports Complex for the kids to play on while the games are going on. Uh, number 10 is parking lots at Centennial, uh, Dow, Rovee and Washington Parks. Uh, parking is a problem at some of our parks. There's, uh, no off-street parking. So, um, identifying a spot where we could just kinda widen the road and, and put in some parking spaces would be positive, we all thought. Uh, number 11, tennis courts at Washington Park. Um, this kinda, um, ties in with, uh, the current bike park idea. Uh, the bike park, if it should go in its entirety and, um, it has the, uh, component for the, uh, the, the skate park portion of it, then we would move the equipment from, uh, Washington Park. And then maybe, uh, improve the tennis courts again and, uh, and have a spot to play tennis. So, uh, last is the, uh, the Heritage Park, which has kinda gotten kicked all the way to number 12. Um, because, uh, after all the work that we put into, um, getting a design and everything, it was gonna be, uh, a pretty huge expenditure. And then, uh, so, and then, uh, 12A was, uh, we were looking at a, like, a large pavilion with restrooms and, and, uh, and places to sit. And so kinda like, uh, if you've been to Upton, that are park, um, where it's got the, the enclosure with the, like, little kitchenette and the bathrooms. So, but that was something that was actually in the design for Heritage Park. So we kinda coupled those two together because, uh, um, you know, uh, it, it would fit better. So, um, that's all we have right now, um, for our top 12. And then, uh, Jeremy Dedick was also present at, um, to kinda give us a briefing about how things have been moving forward with the, uh, with the, uh, uh, the pump track. Um, and things are looking pretty shiny right now. He's working with, uh, Matt from Tallgrass. And the mayor's been involved, um, quite extensively, too.
I got a good email when you're done.
Okay, um, and, uh, uh, yeah, so, uh, Matt from Tallgrass also helped out the, um, with, uh, Heritage Park and kinda, uh, making the design and stuff. And I, I think he does really good work, having worked with, um, him and, uh, myself and, and colleague have worked with him for the Heritage Park design. And, uh, uh, I think it's gonna be a really neat part of when it's all said and done. And then, uh, Jeremy kinda went into, uh, wanting to have a, an M O U from the council. So that, um, you know, if they were able to, like, work with the council and have our authen, authorization, then there's some, uh, guys that work, uh, Jeremy, namely, that's good at, at seeking funding and, uh, and putting in for grants and things of that nature. So I think, uh, many hands make light work. So it would be a positive thing to have a memorandum of understanding with the Bents Sprockets and, um, authorizing them as a council to, uh, work in conjunction with us to try to get funding for the park. Um, so, yeah, uh, I don't, Greg, did you get ahold of Dublin and all about this?
No, I have not yet.
Okay. Well, it's in the notes, Greg.
Yeah, I just.
Oh.
Hadn't got that part of my day.
Okay, well, we'll look forward to hearing more about that, maybe at the next meeting. Uh, and then Jeremy also reported on all of the trail work that's been done, including the Serenity Trail, Flying V Trail and the New Porye, uh, Trail. Uh, they're, they're doing great things in the surrounding area, really, uh, expanding those trails and, and making opportunities for people to get outside and recreate. And, uh, oh, there was also discussion about the, uh, um, there being a, a committee formed apart, um, from the Parks Committee that's, uh, specific to the, uh, to the, uh, pump track. 'Cause it's gonna take a lot of work to get it, uh, moving forward. So, um, yeah, Greg was gonna work on, uh, uh, talking with the folks at the Bents Sprockets and, and, uh, uh, Matt, the architect. And, and it would be similar to what we had for the Heritage Park project. We, um, just have a separate entity that's kinda, um, getting things moving.
That's all I have to report.
Okay, so I just received, uh, an email from Matt from Tallgrass. He goes, hey, very exciting. We just had our national A S L A conference. And it was cool to see the latest and greatest from skate and bike park vendors. Nothing specific to report except pure excitement. So we pretty much have our plan together for our first conversation with the group. This won't be the pretty rendered version, but more about what you want to show and how. So it'll be, um, pretty much like the Heritage Park where we could show it to the public. Um, and, um, I know, I'm pretty excited about it. So as soon as I get more information on that, I'll let you guys, the park committee, know. Um, and then, you know, re-edify, uh, Jeremy said we're some great, um, with the rec, Wyoming rec, uh, for grants. And I know they use that at the fairgrounds as well, another recreational grant. Um, so I know that my niece did, um, sat the park at the, redone at the fairgrounds. And she can give me some information to see if we can gather. But I would like, I agree that we make some kind of M O U with, um, Bents Sprockets, um, because they're pretty excited and wanna start working on it right away, so.
So does that need a motion?
Yeah. I move that we do do that, make an M O U with Bents Sprockets, so they can do whatever they have to do without, happen to come back to us all the time.
Wait a second.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Um, just to re-edify that, if they do apply for grants, um, there are grants that would have to come to the council for us to approve and sign since it's city property. So, um, it's not like they're just gonna go right out.
No.
But they can go ahead and do that without just letting you know.
Right.
And that's one thing I'd wanna be sure is, making sure their business is great and active. You know, we ran into that with the Heritage Park. Um, having to not make sure that they're down to the state, you know, on our behalf, that they're trying to get grants, which could kick out some projects that we're trying to get.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
If I may even add, Mayor, um, one of the things Jeremy did indicate is that they wanna get started doing some sort of pump track right now, even the dirt track. It's not gonna be the final, final prop, uh, final deal they have at that site. But they do wanna get the kids playing on it and get, get the kids to go in and stuff like that. So there will be a dirt track there for now until the more permanent, uh, structure can build.
Oh, and that's one other thing, too, is there was some proposed site.
Signing, uh, with a sign saying, more to come.
Yeah. Just like Johnny Carson.
Future pump track, more to come, future site.
We're ordering signs right now, so I propose to, to the committee to purchase a sign of this future, I'm gonna. Who's doing the dirt work? That's what we're gonna order.
Well, we have.
We have volunteers.
We have a volunteer, a local company volunteering. I just wanted to double check with them before.
You, you already talked about it in one of the prior meetings.
Yeah, but now that we're at this point.
I think we need all this volunteer work in our D.
Yeah.
No, he, he'll follow through.
It's okay. Also, um, uh, the plans that Matt at Tallgrass is looking on, 'cause I know we keep saying bike park, bike park, that there will be skate park. I just wanna clarify that there will be a skate park along with the bike park. So, but that's all, that's all I have to end. But it's just, I just got that email from Matt, so it was like perfect timing, so.
Great.
We were unable to have a water committee meeting, but, um, I've been doing some work on, uh, contacting, um, contacting, uh, uh, third-party contractors in regards to our, our current rate structure. Um, I got three answers back. Um, I can talk more about it at the, at the Water and Sewer Committee meeting and provide you guys with those numbers and everything. But, uh, I contacted eight different firms, but I only received, uh, response and, and bids from, from three. So I left over that committee.
That's good, good work.
Do we need to reschedule that now, or do you already have a date?
Uh, it's, uh, two, I mean, I'm, I've got stuff on my own time, so it's pretty much up to the committee.
You got three guys down there?
If we could do it seven o'clock, um, Monday, the, um, what's, uh, what's today, the sixth to the tenth, or?
The 13th.
Very Monday.
Next Monday.
13th.
The 13th. Thanks. You're fantastic.
Seven?
On the calendar right there.
Uh, yeah, I have to, I have to leave for a bit, so I, uh, seven o'clock in the morning on Monday, the 13th would work out great for me and I'd leave.
Seven o'clock in the morning?
Yeah. Are you on early, Iser, Tom?
Well, yes, he is. I won't say he is.
I'll, I'll, I'll bring a thermos of coffee to the meeting. All right. I know Greg starts at seven, so.
Is that one for you? Is that maybe time to give your crew, or?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I'm there at six A M, so that's. That's an A M. There's no way I'm gonna make it. I'm already, I'm working on it. Are you? Play longer for that. Well, you, you could tell them you're coming to our meeting. You're gonna watch your goal.
I'm gonna throw their water.
Yeah.
Yeah, we might let you know, all right.
Any other committee reports? Okay, um, any other business? I have one thing, um, and Chief, if you wanna add in, please do. Um, there's been a lot of, uh, talk about, um, the chief having a relationship with one of our officers. Um, there was an email sent out many months ago, uh, to the police department and its staff that, um, that Officer Nick Kaminsky, is that right? Is actually who Kelly is to go to, Officer Moran is to go to if there's a situation. And if that situation needs to go higher, then it goes to the police committee. So the, and the supervision over Officer Moran is not by the chief. So I just wanted to clarify that in the open public meeting. I can look back at how long ago that email was, but I'm pretty sure it was back in July. July or August. Is there anything you wanna say, yeah?
So in addition to that, Madam Mayor, the reason, and we put it to bed, right, it's, it's to bed, okay?
Don't get it out of bed.
So. There's been, the police department has been suffering from issues for the, you know, over the last two years. And I think that's why there were so many people that were coming forward that they wanted to discuss what we were discussing. It's, uh, you know, we were down to two employees at one point. Um, we alienated people on the police department and they, they moved on and did other things. We were down to the bare bones. And the mayor and the council president were the administrative chiefs of the police department for like a year. So there, there was a lot of frustration with the public in regard to our law enforcement. So, um, hopefully, Chief Thompson, you can, uh, be the phoenix and rise from the ashes. 'Cause it's been a long, ugly road that we've been on to get to this point. So, I mean, and we just had some, you know, change in leadership at the police department as well. It caused a big uproar in our community. So it wasn't just crazy Tyrell coming forward and pitching ideas about things. It was like trying to come up with an idea to take care of our community, not lose jobs, and, and be able to, uh, have law enforcement here. So, um, good luck and God save you, Chief.
We don't think you're crazy, guy.
Oh.
Okay, any other business? Did you have something? Okay, um, can I get a motion to leave the regular council, uh, session to enter into executive session regarding Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four zero five, A triple I litigation, and Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four zero five, A B double I real estate?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
To Penn.
Okay, all right. Would someone like to make a motion on the real estate?
I moved that we sell the lot at fourteen oh seven York Street to the buyer for the cost of twenty-five thousand dollars. Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign.
Is that gonna make you sleep better, though?
Yes. I don't know, I'm low anymore.
All right, do I have, um.
We don't have the money yet.
Do I have a motion to, uh, pay the? Do I have a motion to pay the claims against the city dated November 6th, 2023?
Yep.
Second.
They have a question on that.
We have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
How can we get fuel from travel center when they're out of town? Are they in the city limits? Why don't we support some of these places in the city limits?
I think I asked that too.
There are only two places that we can buy die diesel and not have to pay road tax. And we have counsel of both of them. We use both of them.
Is it Maverick and?
No, it's a shortstop.
Shortstop. I knew it was something that way.
We, we avoided the big corporation gas stations. We tried to support the local, the locally owned ones.
Okay.
But they're the only two that have die diesel.
I just wondered.
Yeah, we've, we have counsel of both of them.
Die diesel?
Die diesel, it's right diesel.
They, the guys have a tendency to like the, like the gateway because it's more convenient.
It's open too.
Because they can just slip their car in there now and actually, they don't go inside.
And it's a little cheaper.
So shortstop, like to go inside.
You don't understand?
But I have no preference.
Okay.
Any more, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. Did I miss something?
Yeah, did you vote pay bills or?
Yeah.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
I forgot to say I abstained. Sorry.
Can you mark that to you?
You abstained without saying it.
Okay, so any further discussion?
I didn't hear them again. About adjournment?
Yes.
You gotta read your Robin's rule of order, if you're honest.
I was asked to give some time.
Oh, oh, that's true, you were.
Well, you know, you didn't have to.
Tom, you don't even know die diesel. What are you talking about?
Get in your reader room if it's an important.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Adjourn at 9:08.
A hot button issue, then maybe.